December 9th, 2024 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
I'll start with our student board members. Sam Cook, Alex Stiltner, Arabella Stanley, Mr. Helverson, Mrs. Wallace, Mrs. Waterston is absent, Dr. Borders, Mrs. Albert, I am here, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Bass.
I am present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you for that. And I understand, Mr. Ridgeway, you have no modifications to the agenda, correct?
No modifications to the agenda.
I will keep it very short on my president's remarks. Welcome to all those in the audience and online. Happy holidays. Hope everybody has a great season of cheer and all that good stuff. So, yeah, it sounds really good, doesn't it? The way I put it. I'd like to congratulate our own Arabella Stanley, student board member, on your recent signing to Spring Arbor University to play golf. We hope you have a great career and look forward to hearing about your academic and athletic accomplishments. Any holes in ones yet?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Close.
Close?
At Spring Arbor's golf course.
All right. If you get any holes in one, you've got to come back and tell us about that, too. Lots of winter concerts right now that are coming up, so check the website and look for all the extracurricular activities. And with that, I will pass it on to Mr. Ridgeway. Again, happy holidays.
All right, I will jump right into the concert. So we have three this week, actually four if you count the Wilds Park Elementary. So we have our middle school choir concert tomorrow in the auditorium at 7:00. The high school choir concert on Wednesday in the auditorium at 7:00. The Wilds Park Elementary Winter Vocal Concert at Wilds Park. Developmental kindergarten through second grade is at 1:30 if you want to attend. And third and fourth grade is at 2:30 in the gymnasium at Wilds Park. And then we also have our band and jazz band concert on Thursday, December 12th. Middle School Robotics will be traveling for the state competition on Friday in Meskegan. I sent out, but they had won the Lakeview Invitational a few weeks ago, which qualified them. And I talked to some of their coaches, and it sounds like they should have won the last one and got third place. So they're doing really well in middle school robotics, so good luck. We have half-days of school on the 19th and 20th for exams, as well as professional development for teachers. And the last day before break is the 20th. So I wish everybody a great holiday season as we get closer.
All right, thank you for that. And just in case everybody doesn't know, our own Dr. Borders, it's his last meeting. Again, want to thank Dr. Borders for his six years of service to the board and wish him well as he moves into a new house?
New house.
New house. That darn fourth point, right? All right, Madam Secretary, do we have any communications?
We do. We have two donations to make note of. Douglas and Michelle Cashman donated $500 to the Iron Dam Robotics Team. And WK Kella Company, Saban Brown, donated $2,000 to be split between high school band and choir. So we accept those with thanks.
Thank you to those individuals. We appreciate their support. And move on to student board member report. What do we got?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report? All right, we'll move on. Present.
Report ever.
We'll give you a pass, that's just December. Presentations, Grow Your Own update. Tammy Chapman.
Hi, I'm very excited to bring Tammy Chapman up to the podium, as well as some of her Grow Your Own completers.
All right. Good evening. As you may know, Harper Creek received $3.6 million in a grant called Grow Your Own to help our staff go back to school and either earn an initial endorsement, a bachelor's degree, a teaching certificate, or add an endorsement and get a master's degree. Since the program launched in fall of '23, we had 19 staff members. Today, we have 30 staff members participating to get a degree. It's pretty significant. Right now, we have 10 teachers pursuing a master's degree, adding ASD, learning disabilities, counseling, English as a second language. We have two substitute teachers who earned a master's degree that are here with me tonight. And we have 18 staff, including parapros, substitute teachers, and a secretary who will be getting their bachelor's degree and earning their initial teaching certificate. Super excited. Thank you for your continued support in helping us invest in our staff and building a stronger future for Harper Creek. Unless you have questions, I'd like to introduce you to the first graduating class from the Grow Your Own program. So we have Alex Decker, fifth grade, he's getting a master's degree in elementary ed. Jennifer Frye, second grade at Beetle Lake Elementary, getting a master's degree in elementary ed. And Melinda Forrest, she's a teacher, she's had a teaching certificate, but she added the Autism Spectrum Disorder endorsement, which she'll be graduating as well. They're all walking on Saturday.
She's taller than me. Hello, and thank you for the opportunity of letting me speak tonight on behalf of the Grow Your Own program. I'd like to begin by publicly thanking the Michigan Department of Education for the opportunity of making the grant available, and of course, also thanking Western Michigan University and Harper Creek Community Schools. I had been a district sub for a little over a year before I was approached by Tammy Chapman about this opportunity. In full transparency, I believe she, as well as many others in the district, may have identified more of my strengths as an educator before I did myself. It was my second year as a district sub that I began the journey of beginning my master's in elementary education through the Grow Your Own grant, and I am grateful that I continue to have further discussions with Tammy and other Harper Creek professionals within the district that encouraged me to pursue the degree. After 16 months of an intense program, I am proud to say that I will be walking the stage this Saturday of Miller Auditorium and receiving my master's of elementary education. While it was not an easy 16 months, I am grateful for the journey. I persevered through a few personal situations during this time and had incredible support from my mother and son and incredible friends. The friends and colleagues that I have gained support from through the district, especially that of Wilds Park Elementary and most recently at Beetle Lake Elementary, has been unbelievable. I am currently holding a position as a second-grade teacher at Beetle Lake Elementary and was welcomed with open arms from the minute they learned of me joining their team. I again would like to thank Wilds Park Element-- sorry, Wilds Park Elementary and Beetle Lake Elementary and the professors at Western Michigan University for their knowledge, guidance, and patience throughout the process. To Harper Creek Community Schools, the Board of Education, the administration, fellow teachers, thank you for your guidance, patience, and support, and believing in me. To the current and upcoming Grow Your Own candidates, you can do it. One saying a dear friend taught me during this process is, "Don't talk about it, be about it." I stand behind this 100%.
My name's Mindy Forrest, and I will be graduating with my master's in ASD, and I'm just glad for this opportunity. I've wanted to go back to school for a long time, but monetarily, I could not afford it. So this is such a great opportunity, and I'm so happy that I can fill a need for Harper Creek and provide services for children that might not have had it otherwise. So thank you.
My name's Alex Decker, graduating with my master's in elementary ed. And I just want to share my appreciation for Harper Creek and for the GYO program to give me this opportunity, the patience that has been shown to me. I'm going off the top of my head, sorry. Yeah, I'm just very appreciative, and thank you.
So Mr. Bass and I would like to give a note of thanks from the Board of Education to each of you. So we have a congratulations letter from each of you. So Mindy, congratulations on your most recent master's degree. And then Jenny, congratulations, thank you for those kind words. And Alex, congratulations. Very proud moment for me as superintendent here. And thank you Tammy for your work as well.
Again, thank you, Tammy. She really spearheaded getting the grant.
She's here to get the project.
Yeah, that's awesome.
She owns it.
All right, our next presentation is Least Restrictive Environment. I believe we have attorney Rob Dietzel from Trune Law Firm. Good evening.
Good evening. I don't think it's fair that I have to follow that. I do have a handout that I'm going to pass out for anybody who wants it. If not, you can toss it in the recycling bin at the end. And I appreciate you having me here tonight. A little bit of context, Superintendent Ridgeway and ISD Superintendent Lunger thought it would be a good idea for me to come and just share some basic overview of the legal requirements under the special ed laws for least restrictive environment. When I talk about least restrictive environment, I'm really talking about keeping students with disabilities in their natural home-school environment, the environment where they're same-age, non-disabled, neurotypical peers would be. And the reason, and I've been doing a lot of these presentations lately, the least restrictive environment obligation isn't new. It's been in the law for at least 20 years and probably longer. Last time IDEA, the federal special ed law, was reauthorized was 2004. And all of these things I'm going to talk about are in that law, but you'll see some guidance documents that predate that. So we've been talking about least restrictive environment for a very long time. Why am I seeing an uptick in these presentations? It's because our focus on LRE, least restrictive environment, has changed. Law hasn't changed, obligations haven't changed, but the Michigan Department of Education and the U.S. Department of Education have both said that this is a priority area for compliance. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what the law says, what the guidance says, and I'm going to talk a little bit about some case law at the end to use as a guidepost on how you move forward as a district. So when we talk about LRE, IDEA regulations specifically say that, to the maximum extent appropriate, students with disabilities must be educated in the same classes and programs as their non-disabled peers are educated, and may only be moved to special programs or segregated schools if the nature and severity of their disability is such that they cannot, through the use of supplementary aids and services, be educated in that non-segregated environment. So key to that, nature and severity of the disability and the use of supplementary aids and services. So when I talk to my special education teams about this concept, I tell them, you have to show that you've maxed out all practical supplementary aids and services, those accommodations, those teaching strategies, those supports, those behavior plans, all of those things that we see as part of both good teaching and accommodating for individual needs before we can think about moving to a more restrictive setting. And then we have to show that the nature or severity of that student's disability, despite those accommodations and supports, suggests that education can only be provided in that more restrictive setting. So that's the analysis that we go through. LRE is all areas of the school program. We oftentimes think about it as what school or what classroom is a student in, but the LRE obligation applies to recess, to lunch, to before and after-school care programs we'll talk about in a few minutes, athletics and extracurriculars. It's that whole idea of mainstreaming within the community so that our neurotypical students and our students with disabilities are receiving the same educational benefit. Throughout IDEA, we see additional support for this obligation of mainstreaming or LRE. So IDEA focuses on ensuring that students with disabilities have access to the same curriculum as their non-disabled student-- their non-disabled peers. And the definition of special education, those things that we do through the IEP process, includes adapting as appropriate to the needs of the eligible student to ensure that they're able to access that general curriculum and meet the same educational standards. So again, LRE is an express mandate, but we see those concepts of mainstreaming throughout IDEA as well. And then the last piece, and if we're looking at a checklist on what we go through to move a student to a more restrictive setting, nature and severity of the disability supports a change of placement, we've maxed out all practical use of supplementary aids and services, and the team has to show that it considered any harmful or negative impacts that move would make on the student. So things like increased transportation time, losing existing relationships with peers, losing existing relationships with staff members. Does the need for a more restrictive setting outweigh those sort of additional harmful impacts of a more restrictive setting? And that has to be something that the team, the IEP team expressly determines. Oops, I think my clicker stopped working, Rob. There we go. So some guidance, and this goes all the way back to 1994. The Office for Special Education Programs, that's the office within the United States Department of Education, says that in addressing the issue of LRE, the IEP team, the student's team that determines placement and programming, must consider the range of those supplementary aids and services, those accommodations and supports, in light of the student's needs and abilities that would facilitate, that would make it easier for the student to be in that less restrictive mainstream setting. So talking about maximizing those supplementary aids and services. Now, every district and every ISD does have to have a continuum of placements. There is no requirement that every student be, in general, at 100% of the time. Within those-- there we go. Within those continuum, you see regular classroom, regular classroom with consultative supports embedded, regular classroom with those supplementary aids, instructional services embedded, resource program, that would be a separate class within the same school building. And then all the way up at the top of the continuum, we see separate classrooms, separate schools, residential schools in homebound settings. And to move up that ladder of continuum, at each step, we have to show, nature and severity of the disability supports this, we can't find any supplementary aids and services that would make a lower rung more successful, and we've considered those harmful Again, this is a mandate that comes from IDEA, and the guidance tells us that anytime the placement is changed up that continuum, it has to be based on the student's individual needs, not on the needs of the organization, not the practical impact, but because the student requires that level of support. Office of Special Education Programs reiterates that that has to be through all parts of the school day, including lunch and recess. And again, that if the student is moved to that more restrictive setting, it's not to address the needs of the system, but to address the needs of the student. Most recently, MDE issued guidance back in May of 2022 that really reiterates all of that federal guidance that we just talked about. The talk at the very end about MDE's monitoring of these standards, and this is why they're such focused, because MDE has said after this May guidance document, "We're looking at this issue, we're doing audits, we're doing compliance reviews." Our Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, the court that governs here in Michigan, has said that in some cases, a placement which may be better academically is not the selected placement because it is more restrictive. And so I always tell my IEP team clients, if we're looking at this, right, if we're saying that academic benefit in a more restrictive setting would be slightly better than academic benefit in a mainstream setting, this is the program that the team has to offer. When we start seeing the gap go like this, and we considered what we could do to narrow that gap, and we can't narrow that gap, that's when moving up that continuum becomes more Our Sixth Circuit said that that nature and severity of the disability occurs really in one of three circumstances. What about the more restrictive setting makes it better? Can we replicate that in gen ed? If not, that weighs in favor of that more restrictive setting. Or do we see that any marginal benefits of mainstreaming are far outweighed? That balance is huge because of the student's individual needs. If that's the case, then that supports a more restrictive setting. And then third, and the one that I get most questions about, does the student pose a disruptive force in the general environment? And if the student is a disruptive force, then that is, based on nature and severity, grounds to move to a more restrictive setting, but again, only if we can show we've maxed out those accommodations and supports. We've done those behavior intervention plans that are based on good evaluation data. So it's not enough to simply say that supplementary aids were used, we have to prove it. And that doesn't mean that we have to say that every student, before they can go to a more restrictive setting, that we've tried 30 different accommodations. But we have to explain that we've tried all of those that are practicable and feasible, and we don't think that there are other accommodations that would support this student in the more restrictive-- in the less restrictive setting. In other words, we don't have to try everything under the sun, we have to be able to explain why nothing under the sun would work better. This Oberdi case, not a Sixth Circuit case, but it basically says, if you've not shown that you've tried in the general ed setting, that you've tried to accommodate through those supports, then you're probably in violation of that LRE mandate. And then most recently in 2018, the Sixth Circuit again reiterated that if there is educational benefit, meaningful educational benefit, that can be provided in the less restrictive setting with those aids and supports, then that is where the student must be placed, even if they would get more benefit from a more restrictive setting. If they're getting meaningful benefit here, more is not a basis to make that move. And I think this was a case that a lot of people in the advocacy community were surprised by, right? Because where is that gap? And we don't know, and that's what the IEP team has to figure out. But one of the things that the courts look to is, is the student making meaningful progress on their individual objectives? Passing classes is not the standard. Are they receiving educational benefit in that setting? And if so, then that's where they should be, unless, again, whoops, I'm going to keep doing that, that gap keeps getting wider. So I want to point out this Yonkers case, not a Michigan case, but this was a unique situation. The Office for Civil Rights, U.S. Department of Education's arm, went into Yonkers, New York, a district that has tens of thousands of students. In that district, they had 4,100 kids who were on IEPs. And Yonkers did a review of just those students who were learning disabled. And what the Office for Civil Rights found is that of just the LD students who were new to special ed, either they transferred into the district with an IEP, or they were found eligible for an IEP in the district, that over 100 of 164 started in a more restrictive setting than gen ed. And so as a result of that finding, the Office for Civil Rights looked at each one of those students' IEPs, and each one of those students' IEPs had the same boilerplate explanation. The student needs a smaller class setting, more intensive instruction. And nothing within the body of those IEP showed what supports were tried or considered to make gen ed successful. And as a result, the Office for Civil Rights says Yonkers was not following the LRE mandate, that we should not have this many students as their initial placement with an LD label in segregated settings. And so as a result, the district had to write a memo to its staff telling them what LRE meant, and provide staff training, and then review every IEP for every kid who was in a more restrictive setting, and consider whether LRE was appropriately considered, and if not, offer compensatory education. So if you can imagine going through hundreds and hundreds, possibly thousands, of IEPs and then determining relief for every one of those students. So academic progress is not determinative. I said that already, that grades and passing grades is not the benchmark, it is, is that student making meaningful benefit? Non-academic services that LRE mandate requires for after-school programs, before-school programs, lunch, recess, athletics, extracurriculars, clubs, all of those things are of the same approach, that we start with the premise that students with disabilities have the same access and the same rights to those programs. Athletics, same thing. A student must be accommodated for sports unless that accommodation would create an unfair advantage to the student or fundamentally change the program. And the classic example is a student who has a mobility impairment and wants to play baseball and asks to have a fifth base added to the game. That would change the nature of baseball, you don't have to do that. But if it wouldn't change the nature of the sport, and it wouldn't create an unfair advantage, then that's an accommodation that has to be provided. Can't make placement decisions based solely on label or severity, it is an individualized decision determined by the IEP team, and the lack of appropriate or adequate resources or personnel is not a basis to move a student to a more restrictive setting. Last point, and then I'll cede my time back. MDE this year told school districts that least restrictive environment was its priority for compliance reviews. And MDE picked 10 separate ISDs, and I don't believe Calhoun was one of the 10. For each of those ISDs, MDE is sending a team of seven to 10 officials, including the State Director of Special Education and the Assistant Director of Special Education, to spend a week in each district, in each ISD. And in each of those cases, and they're traveling, they went up to the UP, they took the state plane, spent a week up there. They are interviewing teachers, they're interviewing parents, they have a whole list of questionnaires, they're reviewing random documents, they're basically doing, on a smaller scale, what the Office for Civil Rights did in Yonkers. And from that review, MDE has said that they are going to work with each of those ISDs on a five-year improvement plan, five years of technical assistance, and one year to address any student-level noncompliance. Essentially, MDE has already predetermined that they're going to find compliance issues, and now MDE is going to be working with these districts and ISDs for five years. I suspect that this is a cyclical review, so at some point, Calhoun ISD is going to get that audit. So that's all I have. I think my last point is, again, that this is an IEP team decision, and taking this training back to the building levels and back to the IEP team so that they know that before making any placement change, and it is lawful, and it is allowable, but it requires homework and due diligence and an understanding of these standards, that only when those standards are met should a student be moved to that more restrictive setting. Any questions?
You know, Rob, I think the reason this came up, at least for me, is, you know, I hear, you know, words about supplementary aids and services, which is resources. And I think where it becomes a-- where the rubber hits the road at every school district is lots of work to be done, lots of legal requirements, yet we're having to work real hard to find teachers in the classroom. So my-- again, I-- you can-- I don't expect you to have the answer to this, but this is the frustration, right, where a lot of expected, for all the right reasons, but where do the resources come to make that happen? And that was a little bit of our pushback on the ISD, because we have to-- we review, we take a look at their budget, and we see a lot of a fairly sizable fund balance and saying, okay, we have a resource issue here.
Sure.
That resource issue is, tends to limit the-- I'm going to use the word supplementary aids and services, which then has a negative impact potentially on the system, which in this case is all the kids in the-- this case is all the kids in the classroom. So don't expect, more of a comment than a question, but, I mean, I'd be interested in what, you know, the Michigan Department of Education is going out and auditing people, but it'd be nice to have them helping with some solutions as well.
100% agree. I, I have to be careful. But I do think that our department has become a compliance department more than a solutions department. The issue that you just spotted is not unique to Calhoun or Harper Creek. I talk to districts every day about that issue. And the biggest part of that issue is students with disabilities who are exhibiting behaviors, right? And when we do advocacy for resources, oftentimes that advocacy is opening new classrooms, which is counter to this message. So how do we advocate for resources to build those supplementary aids, to bring in behavior teams, to help with fidelity checks, to do all of those things before we open more, because we'll fill the classrooms.
Right.
Right? And the more classrooms we have, the quicker they're going to get filled. And I think sometimes we skip steps along the way if there's an opening in a classroom. So really, if we're looking at this from a compliance standpoint and a what's best for kids, how do we get those sup- aids and services in a way that makes sense, that's meaningful, that's impactful, and that doesn't weigh down the resources that you already have?
So thank, I mean, this is very helpful in terms of helping us understand the legal requirements.
Good, appreciate that.
I think we still have some help we need
Sure.
From, from the ISD on, on resources.
I thought the presentation was, was really spot on. I think my question is, when we come back to those highly disruptive students, and it seems like those highly disruptive students are not only getting, they're not getting the education they need, but they're also disrupting 24, 25 other students. And then the, the time gap it takes to get that proper designation, to get them to a different environment. I think that's what I have heard as Rob and I have went to, you know, the different elementaries, especially in the district, district over, each semester over a period of years now. And it seems like the staff members are frustrated with the slowness of, and reaction time it takes to get a student moved to a, a different environment.
Yeah, again, I hear this a lot, and those supports do take time, right? And especially when behavior is so amorphous. I've always said, if I, if I could figure out the magic of behavior, I wouldn't be a lawyer, and I'd be retired somewhere. And so, yeah, by, by its nature, it's a time-consuming process. And the reality too, is there are some students who disruptive impact, nature and severity of the disability can be moved to a more restrictive setting, but it does exist. So that, that goes back to your point too, is where do we allocate the resources? Do we build more classrooms, or do we put it into those supplementary aids and services, or do we do both? And part of the slowness is, I can pick 20 students right now that I'm working on their cases on, that I think they're ready to make the move, and there's not a classroom for them. And then I can think of 20 cases where I think they made the move too quickly. I appreciate you having me in here. This is fun.
Thank you.
Rob, I'm curious, do you have any, any thoughts that you want to throw in?
It's, it's really, you know, both I talked about the staff and going after the staff. The, the staff, teachers who are in the moment with, with students that are disruptive, it, it's really hard for them. I mean, I want them to know, you know, I, I hear them, I see them, and when, when, when we hear things like, you know, we aren't being supportive, we're not doing enough, it's, it's hard, because we, you know, we have somewhat limited resources, but I'd virtually do anything to help these folks. It's just a matter of, we have to stay within the law, and that's part, part of this, is I want to make sure that our board, because they're hearing the same things, because they, they're community members, they're friends with, with staff, parents who are in classrooms, and so they just need to know that there's a process. It's possible that students are placed in a, on the continuum, but it takes time, because we have to go through the, go through trying many, many different things before we find something. You know, I had a situation in a classroom where we, we found a supplemental that, that actually helped, and the students were able to stay in class, in that same classroom. And just finding that sometimes is really frustrating, because it takes a lot of time to, what is that thing that's going to help
That's going to work.
The student.
Any, for lack of better words, any best practices that are out there that are found with other districts? Not that we're not doing those, but...
Yeah. When it, for behavior specifically, leaning into, and I, I have said in presentations before too, I think sometimes we give functional behavioral assessments FBA's magical ability or magical thought, and they're not magical. But leaning into those really intentional data collections on what is precipitating this behavior, and then leaning into your behavioral experts. And then the, the last piece from a compliance and best practices standpoint is writing a good plan based on data, and then making sure that you have processes to implement that plan, and recognizing too, that when a student is dysregulated and we're in a crisis situation, it's really hard for anybody to sit and read a seven-page behavior plan and know what to do, and recognizing the reality of that. So not only doing really good targeted behavior intervention plans, but making them usable and practical, and having people implement them with fidelity. And that, that's something that I've seen, is that we write, we do really good stuff on the front end, and then that crisis hits, and human nature sets in. And, and it's hard to train that, and the best way to train that is to have something that's usable.
Board members, any other questions? Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Did an excellent job.
Appreciate it.
All right, move on to district updates and curriculum. Mrs., good evening.
Good evening.
Happy holidays.
Just a couple of highlights from the narrative report. We are working previously on implementation, as you know. As a board, you approved the C board on DK, A, E, L curriculum, amplify, or DK through fifth and E, L education, both with, based in the science of reading and evidence-based practices. And so, well, it's a monster. A lot of good feedback from staff as far as having the resource and just giving each other grace and time to learn all the pieces. A component that we added is some additional, them, from the company coming in to come alongside us, so that we can make sure that we are implementing it with fidelity. And that was well received across the district. And we have another time set in early spring for that also. Simultaneously, working with our administrators and high school math team to look at our, to look at curriculum resources for high school math that are evidence-based. We started at the foundation while we knew the roughness of work. That's why we started with elementary and middle school. And so now, we are, we've narrowed it down, and we're in the process with them of looking at a couple of different resources. And so I've been meeting with them weekly, and they're digging in, and sample lessons and things are provided. So they're closing out the semester right now, so in the, in January, we will have some additional training and for that, for that team. Our assessment, NWA benchmark assessment, we did open the window before break. In the past, we've only done it in January, but our instructional teams, as we just looked at some data and where we see, how we see kids coming back, asked if that would be okay. And since it does fall within the standardized window, we did open that up this week, and so some testing is happening with NWEA.
Maybe expecting better results, or?
Um, I don't know so much as that, as, I mean, possibly, right? Because you have a two-week window, but just the thinking that they could be more timely as we're getting more refined with responding to those priority standards, and they're ready to see that benchmark assessment, how are they doing? They have their internal assessments, but, but they want that data. I think some, well, only a couple said this, some wanted to have it over break to look at, so they can do some intentional planning. That is not the expectation, that over break they do that, but some did want it. Since it really is a two-week window, and it falls within the norms of the standardized requirements, we're moving forward on that. And the window basically goes from a month from now till mid-January. So, so those are the nuggets. Did you have any questions relative to those?
When do you expect the curriculum, math curriculum to be brought to the board?
Our hope is in the spring.
Spring.
We have, yeah.
So that would be, go into effect for next year, school year?
That's the goal. One of the hurdles, I mean, it's, one of the hurdles is the, the, the most cutting-edge practices, the revision won't be out till the fall. So that is a hurdle, but it is certainly not...
So you're basically buying a car that might, might, with a new engine in it, or?
Honda, Honda, or, you know, I, I think, we feel like we have enough of the understandings, and we're continuing to learn. And they have, some of them have some samples that we can see. So I'm not overly concerned, I'm just naming it, that is a reality.
And we're looking at just one particular curriculum right now, or is it?
We're looking at two different ones right now. We looked at six and narrowed it down through a very methodical process, which aligns, like, at the end of the day, our, which is why I included them in this report, our portrait of a graduate and our mathematical transfer goals, that's our destination. So we need to make sure that as we're looking at curriculum, that it's going to get us to those pieces that we're expecting of our graduates as we're preparing them for that.
Do we ever look at, like, for example, we send a lot of people to the Adelai Stevenson High School, do we ever look and see what the?
It's a part of our process. So first, we look at ed reports and evidence-based, there's different spaces where evidence-based, evidence-based is different than research-based, because the research philosophically has to work, evidence that it did work. And so we narrowed it down to the evidence-based ones, and then we're also going to be doing as part of the process, some site visits. And there's the content, but there's also the mathematical practices that have to be integrated into the curriculum. Quite honestly, without those, we'd probably be similar to where we are. So there's training, visiting, looking at the resources. Those are the three
It's a process.
Things, strategy, and process. Yes, sir. Yep. So I just want to commend the math teachers. They're working hard to dig in. I mean, they have a lot there navigating, and they've been open. We've had three, I'm sorry, four outside resources come in, basically salespeople/trainers come in. And so, like I said, the next step is, okay, now where is it actually working? Having been at this for a bit, you can buy a great evidence-based resource, but if you don't implement it with fidelity, just like anything else, it's only as good as we implement.
I can cheat doing push-ups, right? Or I can do them the right way. Mr., give me anything you want to add on the math side of things?
Covered very well.
Anybody have any further questions, thoughts? All right, if not, move on to facilities. Mr. Robinson, good evening.
Thank you. I submitted a report. Couple little highlights and trinkets we'll talk about on the report. I'll talk about filter first in a little bit. We talked in the report about the crosswalk, and we'll talk, I guess I can talk about it now. We do have both sides of lights working now, so I just received an email prior to the meeting tonight. We are working with our architect and getting everything turned over to the county and the city, so that they can begin the maintaining of that and everything. I just heard that tonight. So we're going to get those, get all the parties together, review it. We're really looking at, a long and short story is getting some more signage out there, so it's able to be seen better. Right now, while lights work, people still tend to drive through it. So also, we talked about, I had a salt spreader listed on there that we thought was down and out. We had somebody else look at it, recommended we get a new one. My team actually took it upon themselves, we kind of put our heads together and actually fixed it, so we were able to get that up and running. So saved the district about almost $11,000. And then also, we had a building committee meeting last week, a couple of the items discussed, where are just our district needs? We talked about those, from probably the next year to the next 10 years out. And there was a pretty big hefty price tag on those. We discussed, you know, just facilities, facility updates, and just future broad, you know, what we're looking at. And we're still early discussions, but timeframe's a maybe future box, whether it be small or large. So those were some of the, the big-ticket items we talked about at the building committee meeting. And last but not least, filter first requirements that we've talked about, the legislation's out, the grant award came out, and Harper Creek received $88,028.48 for that. So also will help pay for items that have been purchased back to October of '23 that would meet the grant specifications. So we're excited for that. Thanks to Jared Ransom, our grant writer, he helped me out a great deal, and he submitted it for us, and just we're glad we got that. And really, thank you, the last thing I have, thank you, Dr. Borders, for all your work and with the board, and have a safe and happy holiday season.
All right, thank you. Move on to finance, and Mrs. Obermeyer.
All right, I'm going to talk off of a board reports a little more this time, because we did not have the finance committee because of the snow. First one is the board breakdown. I, it's the budget from June that you guys passed. You see this every month, but a couple of things I wanted to point out, the state funding, we get to the, right, I have a little note, we have received our second out of 11 state aid payments, which would put it at 18%. It's a little more than that, mostly because there's some carryover of grants from the previous year, and some one-time payments. The retirement sometimes does it in four sections. We got our first section, so it's a little higher than normal. The incoming transfer is zero, it always is, just so you know, that makes up the special ed reimbursement, and then the pill money. And so we don't receive, we'll receive our first special ed reimbursement either the end of this month or the beginning of January, so you'll see that increase in the next one. Down at the expenditures, I, teachers are the primary out of 111 through 113s. So it's about 30%, eight out of 26 payrolls have been paid out, which is tracking pretty closely. The insurance is usually a month behind, so it's, that's why it's a little bit lower. And same with year-round employees. I showed you what function codes those are, 11 out of 26 payrolls, which is a little bit higher, 42, 43%, which is right on track also. Is there any questions on this one? The ones that are, you know, 100% are just, if you look at the actual dollar amounts, I budgeted 2,600, and it's 2,700. The summer programming is just because the, it's all grant-funded, but I budgeted that we'd have 71,000, and we spent 104, but again, it's all grant-funded. So when I do the revision, I believe it will be in February, we'll get that taken care But the actual dollar amounts are not huge dollar amount differences.
Just one question.
Yeah.
I see the deficit is up a million dollars over the proposed deficit?
No, that's just because the, the way that funding comes in, it's the revenue, we've only received 28% of our revenue, and we've expended around 33%. It's just because of the, the way the funding comes in.
I suspected that, I just
Yeah.
Confirmation.
You've been to one, a couple of my finance committee meetings.
Yeah.
So, so a question for you. So we're about a quarter in. Do you have any areas of expense that you've identified for potential?
That, that of the, as, that expense, it would be less revenue if anything. So I think the expense is pretty right on. I mean, we'll, we'll go over it in February, but I think the expenditures are, are pretty much right on, because there's been no major, major changes. It will just be the revenue and pupil count. The next one is the cash balance. MyLAF, again, a bigger portion I've been putting into MyLAF, cash
What's MyLAF for people?
What's MYLAF for people earning a finance?
Michigan Liquid Asset Fund.
So it's an investment place that we?
That we've been utilizing. Yep. And they, it, this year, or it was four point seven six percent. Every seven days it changes, but for that month it was seven, or four point seven six percent. Whereas I was getting, uh, like one percent on our, uh, checking. So we actually, I actually went back and just looked, I was curious. Last November versus this November in general fund, we made seven thousand dollars more in interest. We did have more, a little bit more cash on hand though also. So it's a combination of the two things. Debt, it was significantly more. We, um, have five hundred thousand dollars more in, in debt right now and cash for debt. But we made ninety-two hundred dollars more in interest also. So that helps some.
Yeah. How much do you think we were adding to our bottom line and just smart money management at the end of the year with these tools per se? Through, through the CDs or the MYLAF?
Well, in, in just a month, it's been twenty thousand dollars. So.
Good.
Yep.
Month to month. I mean, we, we do have more cash, so.
Sure.
And none of that was budgeted in your revenue model?
Uh, as, as, a small increase, but not this much now.
There's some revenue right there. I just found it.
There's some revenue. Yeah. Well, we'll look on, in February, what, what all that'll do. And then I just had the regular check register. I went through it. Nothing weird this month that I, that I saw and.
That's probably the one piece in the, that the budget committee does if you're, you know, we obviously will have a new member in the budget committee at least. And we look through here at the committee meeting and look for things that, you know, hey, why is that high? What is that? I don't know what that is. And, um.
They get a more detailed list of what it actually is.
But it is our, what we are spending out of our, every check that we've written for the district.
And then I have more fun later in the meeting, the salary schedule. I'll say that.
Only while I was curious, suppose Michigan's finest chocolate that got ten thousand eight hundred?
Well, that's actually from Six Straight Camp, the fundraising. So some of it does look weird, but it's.
That's a lot of chocolate though.
Yeah. There are some things that I'm like, hey, just so you know, this is a student activity, uh, fundraising item or something like that. So.
Thank you, Mrs. Obermeyer.
Thanks.
Move on to technology and Mister Maynard.
All right. Not a lot new this month, but, uh, we talked earlier at the committee about when the clocks might get installed. And the guy was waiting for me when we got out of the meeting. So I picked up the clocks and took them over to Vito Lake today. I'm assuming that means any time now we're gonna start seeing those go. Was finishing the middle school, um, and the large clocks as well. Camera-wise, we're still waiting on the county's project to unfold. They are doing little bits and pieces here and there. They got another guy coming over this week to get GPS coordinates off our existing cameras. But while we wait, uh, the server migration is probably gonna happen over break. And then I'm hopeful we can take the ones we take out of service and use them as stopgap servers until we get something better. Cause I think they will function in that role.
We do anticipate getting servers from the county grant, correct?
Yes. One, maybe two, or one really big one where that's kind of the discussions that are ongoing.
All right. Questions for Mister Maynard? Move on to comments related to agenda items. All right. Consent agenda, Madam Secretary.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the consent agenda as follows. Approve the general fund checks, school services fund checks, school lunch, and student and school activity fund checks in accordance with the list discussed. And approve the following minutes as reviewed. November eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, regular meeting minutes. December fourth, twenty-twenty-four, building committee meeting minutes.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Mister Smith, supported by Mrs. Wallace. Do we have discussion? Here and seen on, please call the roll.
Mister Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yep.
Hmm, Dr. Borders?
Yes.
Mrs. Allward, I vote yes. Mister Smith?
Yes.
And Mister Bass?
I vote yes.
I'll carry.
All right. Thank you for that. Uh, move on to information discussion, school safety. Mister Ridgeway.
Yeah, the school safety committee met. Um, one thing that we've been talking about is doing a tabletop exercise, which would be a simulation of an event. Basically Chris Young, the emergency manager from Calhoun County said, well, what, what worries you? And I asked a few of our administrators. And one is, uh, what if we had a threat to school safety that if we had an extracurricular event, like a athletic contest on a Friday night? Or maybe even at a band concert in the auditorium, um, how would we react and what would we do? So at the next meeting, we're going to do a tabletop of a extracurricular event. And that just simply means we will talk through how that event, how we would react to the event so that we can see holes and make adjustments to get better. We have been meeting about specifically Friday night, uh, fall, uh, football games because that seems to be our largest event. And we, we meet prior to the game, um, to make sure that everybody is, knows where they're supposed to be and what they're going to do. But we have not done so much for the smaller events, so we want to take a hard look at that. Conversation about the radios, uh, the, um, county dispatch put in new, uh, radio, uh, towers for the radios. We have one in Sonoma. We've noticed that there's been a diminished, uh, use of radio in terms of clarity. And so that we found out from the, from the emergency managers happening at the county level as well. So they're looking into to see what's going on. Our radios are hooked to the state police system. A crosswalk, we synchronized the lights. We're doing pretty well. You can hear Jim. We want to now put in some signage so people slow down when students are crossing the road. And the lights are flashing. I thought that was in driver's ed one-on-one, but I could be wrong. That's just being funny. Uh, for emergency operation plan, the, the board had approved that a while back. We are, we think at least one-third of the way through. Uh, Jim and I received another email today to, to do the next third. And so we'll continue through the process. It's, it looks really good so far as a draft. And we will bring that to the board more than likely in a couple of months is my guess. Talked about the camera project Jim just talked about, the notification system Jim just talked about. I asked any future things. One thing that one of the members had said is we, we need to make sure that our substitute teachers or contractors coming into the building know our safety plan. So if we have a substitute teacher in a classroom, that they know, you know, what to do in the case of a, a lockdown, a, a secure mode or anything that may, that may happen, that they are briefed. Now, we have subs that are in the district on a daily basis. We feel pretty good about that. But sometimes we do have substitute teachers who are not here daily. And so how do they find that information and, and making sure that we're consistent? And then finally, uh, there, there was lots of talk about emergency, um, like we have the rave alert, rave panic alert, uh, which goes straight to nine-one-one. That's working very well within the district. But what are some other ways that we could do similar things? Uh, and one of those is having the, the panic button that we have that will attach to these notification systems. So when you press the panic button, all of the strobes come on, a mechanical voice says lockdown, lockdown, lockdown. So that everybody knows what to do and gets behind the locked door as quickly as possible. I think that was the safety committee this time.
All right. Uh, item B, salary schedule.
Okay. I, I'm gonna talk a little and I'm gonna have Ginger then clean up. So you're gonna back clean up on this one? I, I don't want to say anything incorrect, but, uh, basically there was a case at the, at the Michigan Supreme Court about, uh, retirement, especially of employees in Michigan, in which there is a job category with three or less employees. And so in the past, they would take a look at the contract of employees. They would take an average of the three to five highest years that that person made in their salary. And they would calculate the, um, pension. Because of the lawsuit, there was a change and they, and I mean, when I say they, the Office of Retirement Services is expecting a salary schedule. Last year in the spring, um, Mrs. Obermeyer brought to you a salary schedule and it was a basic salary schedule. That one, I, it's, it's in your, it's in your packet of stuff that on, on your board table. There was two years worth. It had most of our, uh, employee groups, but you will notice that there was very, or not very few, but there were some at, in the new salary schedule that were missing. And so basically we took the salary schedule for best practice from other districts as well, cause it's brand new. And came up with a salary schedule. I want to be really clear about this, that these numbers you see on here, uh, can be changed. Because when we negotiate, let's say a teacher's contract, they have a salary schedule. And every third year or so we renegotiate and those numbers change. Uh, these are not set in stone. If we had somebody leave the district in a, in a job category, we could reset. We can do all of those things still with this schedule. But the Office of Retirement Services expects that we have something to hand to them to say, what did Rob Ridgway make over the last three to five years so that I can calculate the retirement for him? And then anybody in a category, for example, assistant superintendent, high school principal, finance director, tech director, uh, all the way down to our hourly employees that you can see on the list, have to be within the schedule so that we have, um, something to give to them of actual salaries and what anticipated salaries may look like. So a real salary schedule. We are very detailed on this. Mrs. Obermeyer made this up, but I think that she did a pretty good job to make sure everything was included. Oh, we plan on bringing a salary schedule when we do the budget meeting in June on an annual basis. So basically we'll take the schedule and add one more year onto the end. And that will happen every June before, um, the salaries start for the school. If that makes sense. Go ahead. You're ready to clean up. Go ahead.
So, um, this, you get, you've already passed this. You guys have heard about this for a year and a half, right? This is just with the, we keep getting more and more information of what they think we should do without saying black and white, what we should do. So this is all the recommendation from ORS, Trune, MASA, all combined into one. And this is actually the one that other districts are using. Like we, I pushed it out to other districts. So that anyone in these roles will not be, um, nothing will miss a beat when they go to retire. And in fact, just so, one of the clarifying thing is, um, it's actually not, it's, you're not supposed to be able to look at it and say, what is Rob Ridgway making? What does a superintendent at Harper Creek schools? If that, that was a clarifying thing, whereas here it was more, um, that was something that was important to ORS to say. So that's why it has levels instead of it literally saying superintendent or finance director or. So all it is, is it's the same information. It's extended out. It's going to still come to you guys even when we hire it. If I were to leave and someone else were to take my place, I would recommend that they bring this. Or, or, you know, a principal leaves and someone else comes, they, they bring this to be updated, um, with that hiring. Instead of their contract that you guys approve, you'll be approving their salary schedule. That goes for the contract. So it's the same information. The, the years out are really just, in truth, me making up numbers, right? And then, but every June you guys are going to look at it and, and approve the salaries. Just like you do with every other group. But we're just getting it so that it's, um, in black and white for, for ORS purposes to benefit the employees.
So it appears there's like increases on every single one of these except level fifteen.
Yeah, I noticed that too. They, just now I noticed that the level ten.
Um, level fifteen is a, um, that's just how it always has been. So that that's actually, um, a position that is a position and it's, it's an added duty. And I just didn't wanted to make sure that that person, um, like we normally don't even have that on a s- schedule, but I wanted to make sure it counts towards that person's, uh, retirement.
So they get another, a regular pay in addition to?
Yes. So there, this is actually a principal who gets an extra duty pay. But I wanted to have it clear on there. So when he goes to retire, it, it clearly says this is his base pay, but he's also getting this base pay.
Gotcha.
And it only increased, increased this year because today we added a program. So it's a little bit more this year.
And so what, what the ask of the board is, if you feel comfortable, is to, uh, take action to approve the salary schedule. In case we do have, uh, folks that decide to retire at the end of the school year. It really is a retention issue on top of not only, uh, making sure is people are going to want to be at districts in which they're taken care of in terms of their retirement. Uh, what happened, uh, in the mess of the lawsuit. ORS had started to give people what they made the first year they were on the job. So for example, if I started 10 years ago and I, I, I had, was at a certain salary, that's what they would base your retirement on. Instead of any increases that you may have received. So that's why the salary schedule is something that they're mandating. It's in the law. It's just, it was meant for, you know, really for teachers because that's the majority of the, the folks within the system. But we have to take care of everybody in, in the system. And we, we also have employee groups like, let's say our paraprofessionals that have a salary schedule. Our maintenance employees have a salary schedule. Transportation, they have a salary schedule. So this is just doing a salary schedule for this.
Anybody have any questions? All right. Move on to MASB conference update, which was gonna be done by Shay this evening. As she is sick, I think we will push that to our January meeting. And move on to superintendent contract.
All right. Superintendent contract. So basically, uh, this is the time of year that we talk contract. For me, um, I'm not talking about contracting in terms of salary or compensation. I'm talking about, we have to get it updated for the language that was changed in the law. That's the, the primary purpose. I had talked to Mister Bass, um, when we met about the agenda setting. He thought that should go to the superintendent compensation committee to discuss. Uh, but my suggestion would be very simple. Send the, send the contract to the Trune Law Firm. And have them tell us what needs to be in the contract to be up with the law language-wise. We don't have to do a evaluation this year, thank goodness for all of us, uh, but because of the three years of highly effective. Which is nice. So really no action tonight, except for if you'd like to call a meeting.
We will get on that here probably for January. I don't know. Do we need to do it before?
Nope. No, there's no timeline. Really the timeline is getting it done before June thirtieth.
Okay.
So plenty of time. We just happen to do it this time of year as it revolves around evaluation typically.
Okay. Uh, it's, uh, item E, facility dedication.
Okay. So we received a request for a facility dedic- dedication. Uh, what the request was is that we renamed the, um, I'll call it the access road for lack of a better term, the road between the high school and the middle school that travels next to the soccer field and the practice facilities that are up over there. The request was to, um, name this after deceased alum and citizen, Matt Byrne. I'm just gonna talk a little bit about Matt because this was what, what was given to me. Generally Matt was a very special person who helped with the football team during his, his time at Harper Creek. During school and then after graduation. He happened to have Down syndrome and suffered from a congenial, congenital heart condition. He passed in nineteen ninety-nine at the age of twenty-nine. Um, and he had left an indelible mark on those who came in contact. And so much so that the team continues to do a prestigious awards in, in his honor. And so the request came in that, hey, maybe we could name the access road after Matt. And thought that would be good. The building committee took this topic up and it came, uh, the suggestion came up that, well, what's our policy first of all? And we do not have a policy from Trune Law Firm on naming of facilities. Um, and so what is our procedure? And we looked back in time and I looked at the Neola policy and it was very basic. It said that the board will decide if, on naming of facilities and you cannot name a facility unless someone is deceased or no longer employed with the district. And I think that, uh, based on the conversation from the building committee, they don't make the decision, but they, they, they do give recommendation. And the recommendation that, that I heard is that we need to have a procedure in place so that we can feel good about naming all facilities as we move forward. I did put a sample or a draft procedure in the, in board book. I'm not sure if everybody had a chance to take a look at that. But it was a somewhat detailed procedure. And I also contacted Trune Law Firm and they said, although they don't have it in their basic policies, they have written, um, naming of facility policies for districts. So we could ask for that. My suggestion, if the board wants to move down the road of setting a procedure or a policy, is to push it back to the policy committee. To look through, review drafts, look at Trune's potential policy, and then come back to the board with a, um, suggestion for. look at Trune's potential policy, and then come back to the board with a, um, suggestion for, for procedure. I don't think there's a question in terms of the person and the naming of the facility. I think that's a, it would be something very nice for the district to do. I think the concern is, we need to have a procedure so that we follow it when, when somebody would like to have parts of our facility to name after them. We have parts that are named as, right now. I think we've done as a board since I've been on, um, two or three different times where we've named some parts of the facility. I put on the draft auxiliary facility, because the first time I looked up dra- drafts, it was like naming the entire school, like the process to name a school, not the process to just name a portion of the property. Uh, I vote for any discussion at, at this point.
Sounds like we need to move forward with Trune to have them bring their information policy and get it in front of our policy committee.
Agreed.
I'm a little concerned Trune's policies are a little, and I say basic, but they, they don't go into too many details, like step by step by step. So we may have to, in addition, have the, have guidelines.
Well, maybe that our policy committee can take the best of all worlds of what you have here, what Trune has, and see if they can mold something together. Maybe we could get that done in January, so in February's meeting, we can approve that and then.
Consider the request.
Consider the request.
Okay. Yep.
I, I definitely wanna see the policy, but I don't also, I wanna see this not get kicked down the road much further.
Yeah, just put it up on the screen so people in the audience can see what the board is talking about. Just, it's just a real s- simple sample, uh, basic. Some good things, some things that I potentially don't agree with, but for the most part, it's reviewing, having a committee that reviews and then gets feedback and then recommends to the board, who makes the final decision.
And we don't need, necessarily need yet another committee. It could be maybe a part of a current committee that already exists.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. That is true.
Sounds like a job for the policy committee.
Yeah.
Easy for you to say.
Let's get one really quick.
December, December, December.
Still.
Still time.
Two weeks, three weeks left in the year, Dale.
I'm free. Or three more weeks.
All right, uh, we'll move on to comments from the audience. Oh, we got one back that wants to raise her hand. Do you wanna hit a comment card or? Come, come on up. So. Slide right over and tell us your name and address, and then in the future, we'll have you fill out a comment card, but thank you for coming up and talking with us.
Yeah, my name's Jaylee Carr. My address is one sixty Chapel Hill Drive.
Okay, will you speak in the microphone so we can hear you?
My name is Jaylee Carr. My, my address is one sixty Chapel Hill Drive.
Okay.
Okay. I just had a question about the band senior night recognition, because we were told that would be discussed here tonight, about it being during either halftime or before the night for the football game.
Okay.
Can I respond to that?
Uh, yes, uh, just so you know, we don't, generally do not respond to, uh, audience questions, but I have a feeling Mr. Ridgeway would like to just say a couple of words.
Yeah, so typically what happens, just so, just for the process-wise, um, comments come in and then I think in this case, the board asks me then to go back and talk to, uh, those involved. You know, to say, what should we or should we not do? Um, and we are going to do a recognition at halftime. It's just, we've gotta figure out exactly how that's, that works at, during halftime. 'Cause I know the recognition before the game, it wasn't quite the same.
Okay.
So to give, the short answer is, they gave it to me and it's my job then to implement, but I can assure you that that will happen.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else wanna put a last-minute hand up? All right, uh, action, salary schedule. Madam Secretary.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approves the salary schedule for groups of three or less as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Dr. Borders, supported by Mr. Helverson. Do we have discussion? Hearing and seen on, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Dr. Borders?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries, six-zero.
All right, we are gonna need a motion to go into closed session. Before we do that, I just wanna recognize our favorite liaison officer, Mr. Victor Pierce back there. Thank you for all your service to the district and thank you for being here tonight. And if you would read the motion, thank you.
Chair calls for a motion that the Board of Education of Harper Creek Community Schools convenes in closed session at the request of a student's parents pursuant to section eight B of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, M C L fifteen dot two-six-eight B, to consider the dismissal, suspension, or disciplining of a student whose identity is known to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Smith, supported by Dr. Borders. Do we have discussion? Hearing and seen on, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Dr. Borders?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries, six-zero.
All right, thank you. All right, we will now go into closed session and, uh, Mr. Ridgeway, we're gonna re-